And three, two, one. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' Work Session. It's Thursday, April 15, 2021, 10:41 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards is present. County Manager, Ramiro Chavez, and Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. The topic for this morning, Commissioner Carolina Mejia joining us as well. The topic for this morning is an agenda review of April 20th. Agenda for the 2 p.m. board meeting. We did not have a chance to do that on Tuesday morning. So we are doing that this morning. The public can follow along on our county YouTube channel or through a conference call line, 360-252-9020, pin is 1234. And so we'll jump right into, we have an hour slated. And hopefully that will be adequate. The meeting, let's see, yeah, today's the 15th. So this is this coming Tuesday's board meeting will begin at 2 p.m. Calling the meeting to order, pledge allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Edwards. We will consider approval of the agenda and board meeting minutes from this prior meeting on the 13th. And then at 2:05, presentations, we have three presentations. The first is Timberland Regional Library, State of the Library, with Cheryl Haywood, Executive Director of the Timberland Regional Library.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a yearly event in where Cheryl Haywood will come and present to the state of the Timberline Regional Library. This is an annual event. This is going to be via Zoom, obviously, based on the conditions. And hopefully next year we'll be in person because she brings a tremendous amount of energy behind what she does. And you will learn a couple of initiatives. The Timberline Regional Library, in terms of developing what they call satellite, is more satellite type of library system. So, and again, this is a great opportunity just to say hi and thank Cheryl for her good work.
Okay. Any questions from the board on this item?
Hello, sir.
Yeah, and the next two items, Commissioners, is a, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Ramiro. Next two items are proclamations.
Yeah, is a proclamation for your consideration is to have a proclamation related to Members Month for Billy Frank Jr. He was a leader in the community, a member of the Nisqually Tribe. And this is an opportunity for you to really acknowledge the contributions that Billy Frank has provided, not just for the Nisqually Tribe membership, but also to the contributions to Thurston County as a whole. If this has been provided to you for your review. If you have any additional marks or comments, please let us know. And also, we're going to be reaching out to the Nisqually Tribal Council members to see if they want to join us on this proclamation. And this proclamation really proclaims April 2021 as a Billy Frank Day in Thurston County.
Questions from the board, comments?
No, sounds good to me.
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead with the next one, Ramiro.
So the next proclamation, as you know, April 22nd is the 51st anniversary of Earth Day. And traditionally, that is what, here in Olympia, we have the procession of the species. I don't think that is going to be happening this year. That is really is an opportunity for the board to proclaim also and acknowledge Earth Day, which is going to be April 22nd, 2021. So the proclamation is in front of you. We'll find members of the community who can probably join us to this proclamation. So at this point, I don't know. I don't have anybody specifically in person, but in mind. But we'll find it somebody from the community who's representative of Earth Day.
I think that we had, I'm doing a Commissioner coffee session with Bob Barnes, who does a bunch of Earth Day activities in the community with kids at McLean Elementary School and some of the projects that are in their grounds. And I think we were seeing if he would be available.
Yeah, that will be, that will be fantastic, yeah.
I think Thomas Keen is working on that.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, perfect.
Okay, any questions from the board on this?
No, sir. I think, one comment, I think they are having luminary procession event. I thought I saw that on Facebook.
So the procession of the species?
Not the procession of the species, but the one they do the night before, the luminary procession.
Oh, okay. That would be great.
But I think they're just having, they're putting up things for people to walk by and see. They're not actually, it's not a parade like it usually is.
That's great.
Yeah, no questions, sorry.
I didn't know about that, so I'll take a look at that. Okay, then we would have an opportunity for the public to address the board and a county manager's update, which would be following up on any particular items. Is there anything there, Ramiro, to?
So based on the testimony you've received this past Tuesday related to the Veterans Fund, I have a final draft of the internal audit. That was my commitment to the board a few months ago. I just want to confirm with internal auditor if that is a final draft. If so, I will introduce the final draft to the board on Tuesday morning for you to review and walk you through some of the findings. Go ahead, Robin.
So, so I would recommend that you do not release a draft. General practices in auditing is that drafts are kept internal and we should only be releasing final reports.
So, yeah, I was heading that way.
Okay.
I have a draft and I send an email to Brandon, the internal auditor, to see if he can, if he can send me a final draft so I can share with the board on Tuesday morning.
Right, but you continue to say final draft. Drafts should not be shared.
So is a final?
Final report.
Yeah, final report, because that they, I believe the draft has been circulated. And I don't see any additional comments, so I asked them to send me a final version of the, of the, of the report.
Report.
If we get to that point, they will address that and I will make it available to the public. But before, the board, I will walk the board through the findings of that report.
I'm sorry, Ramiro, I missed the very beginning. This is a report, audit report on, is it the veterans?
I'm sorry, on the Veterans Fund.
Okay, got it. I'm tracking now. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question in regards to testimony we received in regards to Mr. Ed Lewis and the septic issue. And that was?
A week ago.
A week ago.
A couple of weeks ago. And I think we're following up. And I believe your assistant is taking the lead on that, so I need to check, see where we are.
Okay.
I think Mr. Ed Lewis was asking for an extension of his permit. So I will double check on that, but thank you for your time.
I, I guess I'd just like to comment on that. I would like to have anybody's permit that has run into problems because of this COVID be extended. So I don't, I don't, I don't know what that looks like or what that means, but when citizens do come in and they've been delayed because of anything to do with COVID, I think we ought to ding them again. I think we ought to work with them and do the best we can trying to solve their problem. And I don't know what that means as far as a resolution or directive to staff. But I just, I make mention of that, just because I think it's a serious issue.
Yeah, sir, I believe the board has already taken an action. I think this is in place.
In some things, I don't know that we have in everything. And I think his is a good example of something we probably didn't think about because he's got such a unique system, I think. But, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to the consent items. And 3A is a reappointment to Agricultural Advisory Committee.
Yes, for your consideration, Commissioners, is for the reappointment and Mr. Richard Mankmeyer to the Agriculture Advisory Committee. And his new term will be from May 12, 2021, to May 12, 2023. Again, this is a reappointment.
I have no issue with that.
So maybe I will jump in. I, this is, this is extremely coincidental timing on this item. I did not know this item was on the agenda. I was going to bring up as a commissioner item today. One of the Agriculture Advisory Committee members has been reaching out to me with concerns. And I know Commissioner Mejia has attended some of these meetings, so she can absolutely correct me if I've got something wrong. But the concern, I'm going to raise this now because it relates to this particular item. The concern that I wanted to bring to the board is that the Chair of the Agriculture Advisory Committee, who is Mr. Mankmeyer, was presenting a, I think it's a video, some sort of piece of information about the legislation about extending overtime for farm employees. And another one of the Agriculture Advisory Committee meeting wanted to sort of present information on the other side of that issue because it was a very one-sided, the proposed video, I think, was taking kind of a political position against the legislation that was passed. Another Agriculture Advisory Committee wanted to present contrary information and was not allowed, was not allowed to do that. And the Chair was not observing Robert's rules or acknowledging that he had any obligation to allow a vote on whether or not information should be provided. I was concerned about that. I know, and I thought Commissioner Edwards, in particular, who's always talking about wanting to hear all the information and have both sides present their position, would be concerned as well. And I don't know if we have standards for the, for the meetings. Maybe that's something we can address at our planning session, but there's an agriculture advisory. This has been going on. I've been getting emails about this for about a month. And I thought they'd be able to work it out. You know, I, at first I told the person, just make a motion and let the, let the vote. And now I'm finding out that it's not even being allowed to go to a vote. Now, why does that relate to this item? I opposed Mr. Mankmeyer's appointment two years ago solely based on the findings of the State Conservation Commission, where he was on the conservation, was a supervisor, was on the supervisory board of the Conservation District. And there were findings and he was removed for malfeasance and other, other things. And I didn't feel like in the wake of that, we should turn around and reappoint him to Advisory Committee. I've met Mr. Mankmeyer, super nice person, and I know he works hard on that committee. But I just felt the public would not understand. It was not reasonable to do that. I was outvoted. Although, the other person, who was in the same, exact same situation, came up for reappointment thereafter, and Commissioner Hutchings changed his vote. And we did not reappoint that person, the second person, who was in the same boat. But here we are with a reappointment. And now, you know, if, if the last two years had gone smooth as silk, I might be willing to reconsider my position. But I've been dealing with the last month or two of further impropriety or difficulty with Mr. Mankmeyer's chairmanship of this committee. And given that, plus what I know from the, from the findings of the State Conservation Commission, which I encourage Commissioner Mejia, if she hasn't seen it, to see, to look at it. I, I don't think, I definitely don't want this on the consent agenda. And I would urge the board to not make this reappointment. And then I don't know how the board wants to handle the issue of, of information, of board members being able to make motions, use Robert's rules, and ask for something to be presented on the agenda of the Ag Committee. That's a separate issue, but it's an important issue and it's, it's up tonight.
Could I answer that piece of a question? Could I answer the, that part of a question that you asked, Commissioner Mensah? And in fact, tomorrow, as part of the boards and commissions, we're going to have a discussion. It's going to be proposing for the board to consider somewhat of a rules of engagement to whomever board member that you appoint to any boards and commissions. That is part of the discussion tomorrow as well. So hopefully that will give you the opportunity and the other board members, the other commissioners, to work on, on how you like to see the rules of engagement when you appoint a, a member to serve on, on boards and commissions. So that is part of the conversation tomorrow.
So I kind of want to give some context because I try to attend these meetings whenever I have a chance. And to see what, you know, kind of what the issue is and just sitting, I guess, as a neutral party in these committees. For me, I feel sometimes the use of Robert's rules, it creates obstacles for people to have a conversation or a discussion. Especially in those settings. I think that's something we need to reevaluate. I've seen it used against people who are trying to express an opinion and being shut down because, they, you know, because of Robert's rules. So I've seen it been used in both ways. And so, and sometimes even just weaponized and creates disorder instead of order. And so, in terms of what happened with the video, I was not at the previous meeting where this was initially discussed by some, apparently some group of farmers brought the issue up. It got, from what I understand, kind of offensive, kind of, people were very upset. And then at the last meeting, which I was at, the video was brought up. And there was debate on whether the video should be shown or not because it was not on the agenda, of course. And so at that point, you know, after a lot of debate, it was decided the video wouldn't be put on the agenda. I've revised the agenda for tonight and the video is not on there either. So I'm not sure if, if, you know, this is. I understand the contention with it. I haven't seen the Conservation District information. I believe advisory committees, you know, serve for the purpose to let us see the whole picture on issues and all the different sides, especially for the people that are affected by it. And I believe that this is something I think we need to really discuss at the Planning Commission tomorrow on how we really want to proceed with these advisory boards and commissions. What are the processes? Because I don't even think they know. And some of these people are being told they have to use Robert's rules. And it's, you know, you tell someone, you need to use Robert's rules, and they've never used Robert's rules before in their lives. They don't know the order of process. They don't know, and I don't think people should be silenced because they don't need, they don't know how to use Robert's rules.
So?
I'm just, I think it's, yeah, I think it just requires more discussion. I guess we'll leave it at that.
I guess, I just want to say, on the Chair's comment, that I do care about both sides being heard. I always want both sides to always be heard when possible because I think we make better decisions if we get more information. So this sounds like it's not going to be a consent item for this upcoming meeting, it sounds like. I mean, is that kind of a consensus there that?
Yeah, I don't think so.
That we, I mean, I have to?
That's what the Chair said.
Yeah, I respect what the Chair said too on, on that issue. So, but I, I have a differing point of view of what went on with the State Conservation Group that oversees that. I think there was a lot of internal politics went on there. I've watched Mr. Mankmeyer, Mankmeyer. I've watched him participate, and boy, he's an active participant. And I thought he was Chair of that committee. Is that not right? Is he Chair of that?
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
He currently is Chair?
Yes.
And maybe Commissioner Mejia can enlighten me, because I haven't been to one in a long time. And when I say a long time, I'm going to say it's been about a year, I think, since I've been to a committee meeting. How many people participate on that?
It depends, really, on the month. The previous two meetings, and I wasn't in one, I think, I believe, I didn't go to the February meeting. There's usually around 20 people that participate on it. So it's, it brings in quite a crowd of farmers.
Well, I guess my, my next question, I guess, to you would be, if he's the Chair of that committee, wasn't he elected to be the Chair? Because he, wasn't he a member for quite a while or something, and then he got elected to be the Chair? Is that, that's true, isn't it? So they do their own election?
Yes, they do their own elections.
So if the group is unhappy with him, that's one thing. If a few people are unhappy with him, that's another thing to me. So there's maybe always tensions in groups, I suppose. So I would bend to the will of the Chair as far as removing this, as far as a consent item. But I do think we need further discussion on it. And did you say there's a meeting tonight?
Yes.
Were you planning on attending by any chance?
I was, but if you want to attend, though.
No, 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 no. Because I won't know what's, what's led up to all this. So I'd be looking forward to hearing what you have to say tomorrow. We have another discussion. We can discuss this again, can't we?
Yes.
So for now, let's just, I mean, it isn't a big rush on making this appointment, I don't think, is it?
Not till May 12th, I see that, because his term currently expires. From right here, I see his term doesn't expire until May 12th, so.
Okay, so we've got a little time, huh?
Yeah, the board has a couple of options. Obviously, you want to delay this item.
Yes, I do want to delay it.
Or you may want to bring this as a, as a, as a natural item for you to exercise independent votes on this appointment. It's all the, all the options that you have available to you, so.
Okay, I guess I do want to say, maybe I was premature in saying I wanted to delay it. I, I think that would be stepping on Commissioner Mejia's position as participating at some time, you know, watching what's going on. So I'm going to, I'm going to say, I'm going to follow whatever Commissioner Mejia says.
I don't have, I don't mind either way, whatever way we decide.
I mean, if, if you're satisfied with the appointment, I'm satisfied with the appointment. I don't want to cause, because you know more than I do. Both Commissioner Mensah and myself are probably referring back to past instances. And I feel, I don't know if you forget, but at least forgive if there is a problem. But I don't think, I don't think there ever was a problem in the past appointment. And he continued to be elected, he, Mr. Mankmeyer, continued to be elected as Chair, as far as I know. So I'm going to leave it up to you.
For, for me, thank you, sir. For me, I think we need to discuss what the processes are going to be for each of these advisory committees and boards and how we're going to proceed with some of them in order to, to decide this. And so I, I really don't even, I want to wait until tomorrow until we decide, are we going to uphold these, each individual committee to these certain standards or not? And how we're going to proceed with each one of them? I think that's the first important conversation we really need to have.
So I would just, I want to make one thing clear. One is that you don't have to force someone to use Robert's rules to have a fair process and allow two sides of an issue to be discussed. So if Mr. Mankmeyer doesn't feel comfortable with Robert's rules and decided not to use them, doesn't mean that he can't allow information that wants to be presented on the, on the flip side of an issue that he promulgated the other side of to be heard. And if he's not doing that, then that's a problem, whether you're using Robert's rules or not, number one. Number two, any, any board member has the right to have something removed from the consent agenda. So nobody's bending anyone's will. That's just an absolute right. The question on the table is whether or not Commissioner Mejia, it sounds like Commissioner Edwards and I are ready to vote on this appointment. Commissioner Mejia doesn't have all the background that we have. We, we hotly debated this appointment back in 2019. We hotly debated this appointment back in 2019 and there was a big packet of information from the state conservation commission, et cetera. Commissioner Mahia, it's up to you whether you feel comfortable having this for a vote on Tuesday. If you do, that's fine. We'll just take it off the consent agenda, put it on, we'll vote. If you do not, then you, then I would support your request for more time, but that's, that's your call. I know what I need to know and it sounds like Commissioner Edwards does as well, in terms of the reappointment.
I would like to request more time then, so that way I can have more background info.
So we'll, we'll delay this for the following week.
Thank you, sir.
And, and just to make sure, we delay this to the following week and we put, put it outside of the consent agenda.
Correct. Okay, I think that covers that one. And then in terms of the boards and commissions, we can discuss that hopefully at the planning session. I know Kiddatass County, for example, has a really nice handbook where they have standards and procedures that are given to all of their county committees. It might be something that we look at developing. That's something we can discuss tomorrow, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 3B is Commissioner's Office Resolution Establishing Senior Management Analyst Position.
Yeah, you had an initial review of this item a couple of weeks ago and at that point the board decided to delay this item for a couple of weeks. So here, here it is. And this item is a temporary position of a senior management analyst that has an end date of December 31st, 2024. And the intent of this position is to build additional resources to manage the, really the, all the federal money that is coming to the county. This particular position is going to be reported to the Assistant County Manager, Robin Campbell. And obviously the funding behind that is going to be covered by the, the federal funds that is coming our way. So that's the, the presentation on the item and I'm sure the board will like to exercise some discussion on this.
I do have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Did the county manager say that we opted for more time to make this decision? Did I hear, is that what I heard?
Yes, you discussed this two weeks ago and you asked me to take that item out of the agenda.
Why, why did we ask that? Do you know?
I believe Commissioner Mahia, Commissioner Mensah wanted to have a conversation with the county auditor.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
There seems to be disagreement as to where this position ought to lie and Robin wasn't... Last week we followed up and Robin wasn't here to be able to...
Okay, I do recall that now. Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I heard Mary's position and I'd like to hear Robin's position as to why this is the appropriate structure for this position versus what I heard from the county auditor. He was pretty adamant that it's not.
So I am equally adamant that this position belongs in the commissioner's office. And the reason for that is that this position is doing exactly what your current senior management analysts in the commissioner's office do. This position would be exercising general oversight of funds and the amount of money coming into the county. We do that every day with commissioner funds, including the general fund. We would be, this person would be working with me and Romero on presenting strategies to the board on how to best use the money coming in, all the different streams of money coming through emergency management, public health, the federal treasury money, all of those different funding streams. Each one of them has unique purpose and rules and all of those things. We are not talking about a grant manager here. If we were talking about a grant manager whose duty is to work with offices and departments who receive grants and just ensure that those grants are being approved and claimed in appropriate manners, then I would agree that the position belongs in the financial services area of the county. But this county has diversified, if you will, and distributed and decentralized finance. And we create senior management analysts. They're the highest level of finance managers in the county. They reside in the commissioner's office. We report to the board in your legislative role as oversight over the money in the county and that's what this position will be doing.
Commissioner Mahia, I'll start with you.
I think last week the questions were coming from me. But I have had, I had conversations with Romero and Auditor Hall about this and it's, I see both sides of, you know, of why this position should be in each of the offices. For me, my concern is I don't want anything to fall within the cracks. I know that both the offices are working really closely together. And I know Auditor Hall mentioned concern on, you know, her staff is really working hard and they worked hard when they received, you know, these grants and making sure everything was in tip-top shape. I'm pretty sure Robin and her staff were working really hard on this too. I'll leave it at that. I don't have a specific question per se, just comments.
You sure Edwards?
Why, why are we calling this position a senior management analyst position? Is it because it's the responsibility issue? I mean, it's not a new hire. It's going to be somebody that is a direct report to Robin, for an example, if we go that way, or to the county auditor, if we go that way? Could somebody explain that to me possibly?
Yes, this is a senior management analyst position because those are the positions in your office. Denise Odie, Patty Rossetto are senior management analysts. And again, it's a higher level financial position. There are no senior management analysts in the auditor's office. And there are very few others in the county. Only the largest departments have them. And these are high-level finance positions that are mainly involved in oversight, program management, strategic use of the funds, ensuring that they are in the budget properly and presenting strategy and oversight information to the board on your funds. That's what we do. This is what we do every day.
Okay. I know that the commissioner's office makes funding decisions and we're going to be, I don't know, I guess over the next two years, we're going to be making decisions over another $50 million, I think, that's coming from cares, plus our regular 300 million something a year, I guess. So, but I thought the auditor was integral in all of that handling of funds and overseeing those expenditures as well, almost like kind of a, a team effort is the way I've looked at it. Is that not the case?
That is the case, Commissioner. I work very closely with financial services, but we play different roles, if you will. The financial services is the accounting end of the operation and they review payments after they're made for proper documentation. Is it a proper expense? They're looking backwards. What your finance strategist, senior management analyst included, we're looking forward and we're doing planning and forecasting and strategy and budget advice to the board. This is our part of this role. But yes, we are a tight team.
I, does this boil down then to who's going to be the boss? Is that, I'm trying to figure the, what the problem is, kind of. So is that what it boils down to? Who's in charge and gets to assign activities? What's, I need some clarification. I see the county manager's got his hand up, so maybe he's got an answer for me. I don't know.
So I really don't understand why this request has generated such a larger conversation that perhaps it is an indication that it's a problem. There is not a problem in terms of communications with the auditor. There is not a problem in terms as to how we manage the overall budget and the different sources that we have. We have a very good cooperative relationship with not just the auditor, but everybody in the county. So please don't take this request, there is an indication that we have a problem. It isn't. The request before you is to help us with the upcoming additional money and workload associated with the federal grants. That is the bottom line of this. If we want to get into a conversation as to who is going to be the manager or supervisor, that's a different set of conversations, which I don't believe is applicable. This is, this is a request to help, to help the county managing the money they're going to be receiving in the next two years. We totally respect, this is a simple request for additional help.
Okay, I take it, I don't want to cut you off. Was that the statement, sir? I guess I like the idea of having as many diverse positions reviewing anything to do with financial things. I mean, that's, because I think there's a, there's less of a tendency that there would be a problem. And I'm not alleging there is a problem. I'm just saying I like it when, when we've got differing point of views that come to the discussion or the activity. And I did not visit with Robin or Mary Hall. So I'm not up on all that. And, and my seatmate apparently has some, so I'm kind of inclined to lean on her. Because I just, I, I'm going to, I'm kind of going to defer because I think you maybe have the expertise that I don't have. I don't know. I haven't talked to Mary or Robin about this. I was just trying to figure out why there is any issue. I've never figured that out yet. I know both my seatmates brought this up, I guess, a week or so ago about what we need to do. I don't know that I was as interested then as I am now, so I'll defer to hearing what Commissioner Mahia has to say, I guess.
How do you have, or sorry, Chair, do you have anything you would like to, or should I, can I go ahead and speak?
Let me just throw my two cents out and then you can respond to that because I'm kind of with Commissioner Edwards in a sense. I didn't know anything about this last time and I have spoken with the auditor. I mean, I'm just kind of mystified. There's two people who I respect and I usually follow their advice because it's usually good advice. Each one's making a pretty adamant case about what the rules are and I don't frankly know. I, I feel like I'd just be flipping a coin and I'm not really comfortable with that. And I don't really feel like I should be the middleman in this discussion. We're all adults. I think we should just have a discussion with Mary Hall, Diana Benson, Robin, Romero, the board. Let's just sit down and talk about the ins and outs of it. Because I frankly, I can't make heads or tails of the two cases that I've heard in terms of who's right. I would literally just be flipping a coin and I've never been comfortable making decisions. I don't know that this is the most important decision I'm going to make this week, but it's still an important decision and I don't like it when I don't really know what the right answer is. So that's where I'm at. I would suggest we just have a broader discussion and just hash it out. When I hear people debate back and forth, then I think I'll probably have a better sense of it. Right now, just hearing one side tell me something and then the other side tell me something, I can't, I don't even know the right questions to ask to test, you know, the, the quality of the argument I'm hearing. So I just feel, I feel like I'm in a difficult position and I would, I would rather delay this and have a broader conversation.
Maybe just a quick follow-up. Basically, what I'm hearing the chair say is, you know, he's kind of split on this too, it sounds like. But from my perspective, and this is, I don't know, it'll, it'll sound kind of rash that, but I guess I've never been one to hold back when I think I need to say something. So I believe that when all things are equal, I guess, if, if that's what it is here, which I'm not sure, but seems to be, I believe that the elected official, and in this case, Mary Hall, is the responsible party to the public and staff is not in that category. I know staff is well-intended, but my preference is to go with the citizen's elected representative on a particular issue. So, you know, if there was a reason to go otherwise, I, I would, but I just don't see it. So at this point, and I'm not against doing what the chair is saying, getting together and talk about this, because quite frankly, I'm mystified a bit myself. But because I haven't talked to any of the parties, I guess, on this issue, other than the few moments of discussion that we've had, again, I'm going to, I'm going to say that I would defer to the elected official, but I'm going to defer to my seatmate, who seems to have more knowledge about it. So, so Commissioner Mahia is on the hot seat then, I guess, huh?
Yeah, I do, I do feel on the hot spot. But I guess my, you know, I will agree with, with Commissioner, what Commissioner Mensah said. I mean, I agree, we need, we need more positions, especially with the amount of money we are going to be getting from both the state and the federal government. We need all hands on deck to try to make sure that we drop, we don't drop any balls. But I think we, we need a conversation with both offices to really discuss, you know, is this going to be the only position that's going to be needed or is just a general, just get a general sense of, of what is going on and where this miscommunication is coming from and why there is this kind of contention? Because I, I am like Commissioner Mensah. I don't want to be in the middle. I respect, you know, Robin's and Auditor Hall's opinion very much and I really feel like the middleman right now is same as, as Commissioner Mensah and...
So are we going to have a little discussion later or some kind of a work session or something?
Robin would like the floor.
Hi, Robin.
I would want to, just in response to Commissioner Mahia, this is not the only position that is needed. We have already established additional accounting positions in public health, two, in fact, temporary accounting positions in public health to manage the payments. And part of my conversation with Auditor Hall is that if she needs additional staff, a temporary position to process payments, because one of the things that we're doing, and again, this is where the strategy fits in, I've been having conversations jointly with public health and the community providers that we're working with to get this money into the hands of the people that need it, to be able to meet their cash flow needs, we're talking about weekly payments to the community providers. And that is going to greatly increase the number of transactions that get processed. And financial services may need another accountant, not a senior management analyst, but an accountant to process those payments. It's, it's, we do need more than this. This is the position before you right now. If you'd like to also consider an accountant, I urge you to do that.
Robin, can I ask? Robin, can I ask, have you heard Mary's argument directly from her? Or are you just hearing our, our crappy characterization?
Mary and I have had two or three conversations about this. Three at least, actually.
I myself have, have also had conversations with Auditor Hall. And, and Robin is absolutely correct. This is a request from the Commissioner's office for you to consider. And when my conversation with Auditor Hall is if she needs additional help, she needs to submit a request for you, for a temporary position for you to consider. I don't believe this is a, 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 this position is going to solve all, no. And, and we're not, uh, my point is, this is not, is gonna be preventing the Auditor Hall to submit any request for you to consider in terms of additional work that she may, her office need to do in terms of the, uh, uh, managing the upcoming federal funds. So with all due respect, I'm, I'm very surprised how this conversation has gone. But I'll just leave it there.
The, one thing I, again, I'm not going to do it justice, but I know a concern that was expressed that I took away was some, some concern about grants being handled or managed. Or I know it's not, you said it's not just a grant management, you know, function, but that, that there would be, to separate those into two different places created risk. For us, I guess, was my takeaway from what Mary was trying to explain. And I wanted to hear Robin's response to that.
Right, I, I, um, I do wonder if Mary doesn't understand the purpose of the position that is before you today. And I tried to have that conversation with her yesterday. This is not a grant manager. And again, if it was a grant manager, I would agree that it belongs in her office, but it's not. I would also say, we have people managing grants. The main man, grant management responsibility in the county is in the offices and departments that receive the grants. So public health is responsible, primary responsibility for all of the grants that come from the Department of Health and, and the federal health and all of the housing contracts. And Public Works is responsible for all the transportation grants and the crab grants. And to say that all grant management resides in financial services is inaccurate in its premise. And our office, the Commissioner's office, manages many grants that come into the county in the Commissioner's funds, including the general fund. So this is not, you know, this isn't the grant manager position. And grant management resides in many, if not all, of your offices and departments.
I have a question.
Which one here?
Will this physician be dealing with compliance? With the compliance of the grants? And if so, doesn't that technically fall under the auditors or the grant manager position?
No, uh, uh, so no and no. This position is not primarily responsible for compliance, although the person in this position will be well-versed in what is allowed and not allowed under the grants. Just like any program manager who is managing money that comes into the county. We advise you, your senior management analyst and I advise you on allowable uses of funds on a regular basis. And if there are questions about that, we get advice from the internal auditor and from your legal advisors. We regularly go to Elizabeth and the MRSC seeking legal advice on use of funds. So there's not a compliance aspect, but this person will be well-versed like anyone that manages money in the county. On the, um, you know, who's gonna make the determination question? Again, we turn to your attorneys when there is a question. But usually, um, there are conversations between me, your internal auditor, who by the way, does not report to the county auditor. But we talk to the internal auditor, we talk to the grant manager, and we get advice from the state auditor. And so, you know, that's, it's, again, it doesn't reside in one place in the county. And any assertion that it does is, is an indication that, um, there's not broad knowledge on how money is managed in the county.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I don't know where that leaves us on this item.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, I, I don't know where, I didn't know where to take the next steps on this. Because if, if the further conversation with the county auditor is to where this position will reside, I think we, with all due respect, we're gonna miss the point in terms of bringing an additional help to help us manage the money that is coming to the county. And so, help me, what, what, what expectation the board has at this point? And, and, and we'll carry on. But please provide us direction with this particular item.
Well, I guess I just go on down the line. Commissioner Mejia, well, how would you like this item handled?
I, I mean, I understand the need for the position. I would just like to know, I guess I would like, just like to know more, more information about what the position entails. And I, I think maybe a broader conversation is needed. I would appreciate either a work session or, or, or something related to that so we can, we can discuss this together.
Commissioner Edwards?
I'm going with Commissioner Mejia.
I think I will too. I mean, I, I, I'm gonna lean Robin's way if I'm, if, if the gun's to my head right now. But I think we would all benefit from, I mean, obviously the commissioners don't understand nuances of this that we probably need to if we're gonna be in chairs and trying to make these decisions. So I think we would all benefit from kinda hearing a spirited debate about this. We're all, we're all very collegial and adults and who care passionately about the work we're doing. And I just think that the board would benefit from that. And then we can all feel good about the decision we're making and, and where we're headed with this. This is all kinda new with all this money and, and, you know. So is that possible, Romero, to do and?
So with, with all due respect, maybe a variation to, uh, I will try to bring this item from next Tuesday. Hopefully the county auditor is, is available to have a conversation as part of your commissioner's items. But I strongly encourage you not to have a conversation on this position. Perhaps the conversation will be, what type of resources do we need to manage the upcoming grants? I, I think that will be more fruitful than having a, a conversation where a position belongs to where. I, I think the, the board will benefit to have a conversation, a broader understanding of the different demands that is coming down the road and how the board can support an additional resources to manage the, the grants. That will be my, my suggestion with, with your consent.
Yeah, and I mean, it's good, I mean, I, I'll say that in my two years on the board, my understanding of, of the auditor's role, I mean, I, the board, Robin is our, I mean, I default to Robin because she's responsible to the board. I mean, when there's a problem with the budget, I don't call the, I don't call anyone in the auditor. I call Robin and, and her staff. So that line, whether that's right or wrong, that's the line. That's kind of the chain of command as I see it. And it's only been over the last two years that I've understood all the pieces that the auditor does play in the financial services and the different employees. So, you know, that's something that I think all of us could use an understanding of so that it would help, it would give us the context for evaluating these types of decisions. To understand how Mary Hall's team dovetails with Robin's team using this example, this very, you know, unique example of, of this federal, you know, rescue plan money. That makes sense to me. Is that okay with the board? We good on this item?
Yes, sirree.
Oh, that, that took an hour to go through two.
I didn't like the looks of that consent agenda when I saw it. All right. Let's go to 4A, resolution for biennial budget type.
Yeah, this is, Commissioner, this is a follow-up to the direction of the board to go with a biennial budget for 2022, 2023. And, and before we can exercise your direction, you need to take a formal action by, by adopting a resolution on the biennial budget.
Commissioner Mejia?
I promise I'll keep it short. Does this include like the amendments that we're gonna have? Or is that on a later, I just need clarification on the process?
No, this establishes the, the biennial budget.
Okay.
And what you're, you're talking about is, is, is a process as to how you want to define the, what I call the, the, the rules of engagement for the biennial budget. That's coming up.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, this is, I think, a straightforward result of our previous discussion and decision. So can we move on?
Yeah, the next is, is the same direction of the board by establishing the stabilization fund and, and the general fund. And, and again, that, that meets the requirements, I believe, or the direction of the board, you, you provided. So, and this will be legislative action to establish that fund.
Questions here, Commissioner Mejia?
Is that the rainy day fund?
Yes.
Are we gonna decide to put the 2.2 million?
Yeah, it is, um, thank you. It is included based on, on your, on the recommendations of the work to, is 2 million, I believe, as a seed money.
Okay. Does the language need to be included in the action or, or no? Or is that gonna be another action?
No, it, it is included in the resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Edwards?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, let's go to C, bond resolution for refunds and major information technology systems.
And there's another item as a follow-up to, uh, previous briefings related to upcoming bonds. You've had a briefing from the bond council. And this includes two items, the opportunity to jump on the, uh, the opportunity to refinance some of the bonds that we have and also issue bonds to, uh, to go ahead and implement the ERP project. Robin?
The, um, so as you are aware, the, um, the proposal is to purchase the ERP and other large systems, like the permit replacement system, uh, using bond proceeds and also to refund, uh, the portion, the allowable portion of the current debt that the county is carrying. We got, uh, the initial estimates for the refund and the savings are estimated to be $878,000 over the course of the next 10 years, when, to the time when these bonds would have matured. Or I think it was, um, 7.5% in estimated savings costs by refunding. And the Finance Committee reviewed that yesterday morning and have recommended to the board to approve the issue of the bonds to refund. And then it's also our funding strategy for the, um, the large systems. This resolution would also, um, delegate to me authorization to sign the final documents that enter into the bond sales. So this is something that the county has been doing routinely for, uh, before I came to the county.
Questions on this item? I was in the Finance Committee meeting yesterday and we went through this and I see it's combined. So this would make a lot of sense from the information that was presented to us. Commissioner Mejia, anything?
So just to break it down for me, um, the 19 million bond would be to buy the, or implement the ERP project and other permit replacement systems as well as kind of repay the other bonds that we're currently carrying in debt?
Refinance.
Or refinance?
It's a refinance.
Okay.
What it does is it buys us down to a lower interest rate. That's how we generate the savings.
Thank you for that. Okay, and so that would, the total would be 19 million?
Correct.
And then that would be all the debt that the county is currently carrying?
No, only the portion that is callable. If you recall the, uh, bond presentation from Duncan and Nancy, you know, certain bonds become what's called callable, which means they're eligible for refunding or refinancing. So everything that's eligible is what we would be doing this for. And that's the bulk of the money. I think, um, I think only 6 million is for the IT projects and the rest is for refund, bond refund.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, yes. I, first of all, I want to clarify just terminology. When you talk about bond resolution for refunds, you're talking about refinancing. Isn't, isn't it refunds and refinancing one and the same?
They, they are. And in the bond world, it's called refunding.
Okay, okay, good enough.
Doing your mortgage, it would be a refinance.
Okay, and then when you refer to callable or not, I'm just gonna refer back to say the 3400 building. It seems like we've sold the building, but we still owe debt on the building. And that debt is not recallable, is not? So we, we could not, we could not pay that off because of the verbiage in the original loan acquisition or something, right?
The, the debt issue, that's correct.
Okay, so our, how long do we have to pay on that building? I'd like to get out from underneath that is where I'm kinda going with this. But so how much longer do we have currently to pay off that building?
I'd have to check, but I think that's on the 10-year bond.
Yeah, but from back quite a ways yet, right?
We, I thought we were refinancing.
The debt was issued, it was a 25 or 30-year debt. And I think we've got 10 years to go.
You think it's that much? For some reason, I didn't think it was that much, but that's fine. So we would be refinancing that building again, even though we don't own it because we hold a bond debt on it somehow?
Yes, with a lower interest rate.
Okay, so that's my next question then. So when you go out, we're gonna try and save money for the taxpayers. And we're gonna try and do that by getting a lower interest rate. But we're gonna be paying again for a longer period of time if we do the refinancing. So I'm trying to figure out which is beneficial to the taxpayer. Getting this refinanced at a lower rate, but paying longer, consequently paying out maybe more versus where we're at on what we're currently paying. So like, if we're paying 3% now, are we gonna be paying 2% if we refinance? And so that makes it all worthwhile or?
So I have not seen the, uh, the, the details on the proposals that we've received. But I can tell you that we never, ever extend the time of payment. We will pay them off on the same payment schedule. We are, we're, so if they were gonna be paid off in 10 years, they will be paid off in 10 years. Part of the bond issue is going to be paid off in less than two years and it will be paid off in less than two years, just at a lower interest rate.
Right.
So we already know that we're going to save about $878,000.
Now, that's in total, was total savings. Okay, I, I guess that kinda puts me there. I'm about as confused as ever, I guess, so.
Yeah, it's, so when you refinance your home, this is where the difference comes. When you refinance your home, you can re, it's like beginning all over again. You can refinance for 15 years or 30 years, even if you only had 10 years left to pay on your house.
Right.
When you refinance government debt, it stays on the same payment schedule. It doesn't, you don't start again and to have the whole time again.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now I have no questions on this, so let's move to item 5, IT Management Permit Tracking System Professional Services Agreement.
Yeah, it's somewhat related to the item you discussed. This is to secure the professional services from soft resources consulting. And this is really, I think, is extremely pivotal to have a consultant who can help us navigate through the business requirements that are needed in the permit tracking system. As you know, the Amanda system that we currently have is a very complex system. This serves not just CPD permitting fees, as well as permitting process, but as well as public works and public health. And, uh, and as we use a consultants to help us navigate through the ERP, the, the end result of that is a very, very robust business requirements. The request for you is to, uh, to authorize Dennis, the IT director, to go ahead and sign the contract. And also to waive the competitive bidding requirements, which the internal editor, Oliver, has, uh, agree on this particular approach.
Questions from the board?
I, I didn't quite understand why we're waiving the comparative bidding requirements.
You want to elaborate on that, Dennis?
Sure, good, good morning, Dennis Osorio, IT Director. Um, we, we did go through and look at references, um, for this consultant. So they're, they're local, they, and we checked Watcomb County, which is local to Washington, as well as the city of Burien, local to Washington. And then two cities, um, City of Temecula and Hayward, both in California. They use soft resources specifically for, um, the services we're looking for to, to help them develop an RFP for their permit tracking replacement. We're looking to waive this so we could somewhat speed up this entire project. As Romero said, Amanda, the Amanda system is, um, very critical to the county and it is way, it is way past due. So, um, we really need to move this as fast as possible. And, and when we interviewed, we had all the stakeholders interview the consultant, as well as checked references. It seemed like that was, um, enough due diligence, as well as partnered with Brandon Weber, the internal auditor, that that was enough due diligence to waive the competitive bidding.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Uh, yes. I guess what I'm hearing is that this soft resources consulting may be the only one that's compatible with figuring this all out? Is that kind of what you're telling me?
Um, from our reference checks, they came back, everyone said they were pretty much leaps and bounds in this area, um, for, for consultants.
And, okay. And then we don't have on staff anybody capable of doing this, I'm hearing that, is that right?
Um, well, we did use a very similar approach for the ERP RFP development, and we used GFOA for them. And it, um, was really invaluable for the county. They, the, the consultant's able to play both devil's advocate for us, as well as selecting the vendors, helping us come up with, um, correct business requirements, process changes, go through the vendor demos, come up with scripts. So that, this is really their, their expertise. So some of the things we don't know, what, you know, we don't know, what we don't know because, um, because we've had the same permitting system for so long, but go ahead, Robin.
I would just add to that, the bringing in an expert in a field, as Dennis said, was just incredibly invaluable with the ERP. Because GFOA looks at, uh, financial systems all the time, and we do it at once every 20 years. And it's the same in the permit system. If, uh, if we, the county avail ourselves of the expertise of someone who knows permit systems, we're gonna get a system that has what we need at a fair price, better than we could do, because we don't do that every day.
Okay, that, that, that's a good explanation. I guess my concern is that when we bring in somebody that is so technically capable, and we don't have that capability, then we end up with a, a, a process that we don't have staff capable of dealing with. And we have to continue to go back to outside sources. So as this is developed, will we also be developing the expertise to service this, uh, process or system, or?
So I'd just speak that a little bit. From, um, from the GFOA process, we need to take a lot of the knowledge and the documentation to go forward. As far as replacing these systems, as Robin said, um, we're, we're only gonna do that once every 20 years. So it would, it would almost be a waste to develop that in-house as, once we replace this permitting system, just like we replace the ERP system. Ideally, we should not be replacing those for an extended amount of time. Um, and this will augment our current IT project manager. So it does, it, there is, we do have an IT project manager on our end that will be interfacing with them. But it just lets the county kind of have somebody who's very unbiased, both, both to tell us what we need to change from a process perspective, as well as unbiased for what products to select.
But also, um, if I may, as you stated, Dennis, by having a staff being part of this process, we build that level of understanding how the new system will operate. So we're gonna be able in the position to maintain it after that is implemented. So it's, it's, it's a twofold, and maybe addressing a portion of Commissioner Edwards' question as well that way.
Yep, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to just say one more, this is just to develop RFP for the product of replacing the Amanda. It will be a completely competitive process. We just want to make sure we get all those requirements correct.
I see Commissioner Mejia's got a question.
So I, not a question, just a comment, I guess, you know? I, I do have a concern, I just, um, my concern comes, I, I don't want this to become what JAVs became at Superior Court, where, you know, we're, we're doing this and we later find out we don't even have the correct infrastructure to, to uphold the system. And, uh, it, it's not, you know, all that we thought it would be. So that's just my concern with not going through an RFP, um, and just coming from the experience from JAVs.
Can I, oh, go ahead, do you want to go, I was gonna say, this is exactly what, we didn't go through an RFP with JAVs. They're gonna help us develop a very formal RFP, so we do not end up in that, in that situation.
That is exactly why you want to bring in someone with this kind of expertise about these systems.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, once again, I just want to stress, this is only providing the services to make sure we develop an RFP, develop requirements, walk us through the vendor demos. It is not, um, we are not looking to waive anything for an actual product. We will be going through the competitive process for that.
When we get ready to select a system, that will be through an RFP process. These people will help us, um, develop the business requirements and the business processes and, and help clarify what it is we need in the new system.
And, and they also help, just to go on that, they also help with what industry standards are. Cause how we do business today, we don't want to go buy a new permitting system just to do how, just to continue how we do business today. We, we're going to need to change all those processes to maximize this major investment.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, um, I don't have any question about the consultant. I guess my, I assume the internal auditor knows the, the law inside and out, but it just seems strange to me that you can waive competitive bidding because you've heard good reviews of a certain vendor. I'm not sure which category we're falling under, but.
I can address that. In our, uh, purchasing policy, so stepping back, state law requires competitive bids for public works for construction purposes. The law allows jurisdictions to not go through competitive bid for professional services. And that's what this is. This is a professional service. County policy allows for this waiver specifically for professional services, and that's what this is. So this waiver is allowed under state law and county policy.
Perfect, thank you, Robin. That, okay, then we're good there, let's go to, thanks Dennis.
No problem, thank you.
Go to Public Health Items, 6A, Request for Proposals for 2021 LEAD Program. And I see Mary Ann is here, and Shelley, if I?
Uh, thank you, Commissioners, this is, uh, I want to step closer to start implementing the, the LEAD program, the Law Enforcement Assistant Divergent Program here in the county, as you know, would receive a, a grant. So the request before you is to authorize the Public Health and Social Services legislature to issue a request for proposals to, uh, secure, uh, uh, the case management, as well as the program management services for, to start the implementation of this pilot, uh, uh, project. I believe the board is aware of the, of the LEAD program and the history behind that, but Mary Ann and Shelley are here to answer any particular questions.
Big questions on LEAD?
I do not.
Uh, I do.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm aware of the, the whole LEAD process program. What I'm trying to figure out is what would we be going, we're putting together an RFP, what are we asking for?
A case manager and a program manager.
So two FTEs?
No, um, the, um, is it, if it's okay if I kind of throw out?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So the Case Management Services is a team of individuals? And to operate the LEAD program, uh, to the capacity that we're funded to and the capacity that we'd like to implement the pilot startup at, it would actually end up being six FTE?
I didn't hear that.
Six FTEs.
Six FTE, and what?
She's, something happened there, cutting out somewhere.
Yeah, she stated that six, uh, FTEs, and those are, is a permanent, uh, there is no permanent FTEs. There's our, uh, project, uh, positions.
So the RFP would be, uh, we'd be looking from the program management, we'd be looking for one FTE for someone to RFP for one FTE. And then from a case management services team, we'd be looking for someone to RFP, specifically looking for approximately three FTE case managers, an outreach coordinator, and a clinical supervisor. Because that's what the model calls for as a team. And so that combined looks at, looks about six FTEs. And that's what that model calls for, for a good pilot startup.
So, okay, I guess I, I just want to get this straight. So we're gonna make an expenditure, I'm hoping we do this with grant money.
It is a grant money.
To hire six people, is there a, uh, cutoff date or something on that?
So is, I think in terms of a program, Commissioner, and not necessarily hiring, it's just a program to implement a pilot project.
These, these are not county FTEs.
Who are they gonna report to, or who do they work for?
We're going to hire a contractor, and that is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Ann, but I believe that that's a condition of the grant.
We, we're looking to RFP it out to, um, community organizations in particular. For example, the, uh, Case Management Service, Services, that eligible organization are behavioral health agencies in Thurston County. And in part, that thinking is both qualifications, but also ability to obtain resources to sustain the program over time. That is also part of the thinking, they can, uh, uh, fund treatment. So, uh, it is community agencies that are eligible for this particular funding. And it is a time-limited, uh, project, um, from the healthcare authority.
And where does the sheriff and the prosecutor fit in to this discussion or process?
So examples of how both fit in, I'll start with the Thurston County Sheriff's Office. So for example, Sheriff Snaza in the Thurston County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Snaza sits on the steering committee, um, uh, for the advisory board of the LEAD program. And when he's unavailable, he sends, um, staff in his stead to advise us along the way. For example, determining what criminal offenses would be divertable, um, for this program and make people eligible for the program. He also, um, will be sitting on the advisory board for the program, the, not just the steering committee. And will be providing referrals of, uh, people that the sheriff's office believes would be eligible and appropriate for the program. They, uh, um, the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, this program cannot run without the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney's Office approval. Because, uh, they are responsible for making sure that, uh, the offenses that would make someone eligible are something that they are in agreement with. They also contribute multiple staff, um, to the, uh, effort in terms of when anyone is referred to the LEAD program, when it's up and running, which, uh, we would expect our first referrals to come in June and early summer. The Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney's Office would have staff that would look over the referrals and make sure that person is really appropriate for the program. And they also sit on the advisory board, on the steering committee, and, um, are forming all of the elements that come along with how this program operates in our community. And even down to the point of, um, providing, uh, staff that convened a law enforcement, a, a meeting with law enforcement across Thurston County just a few weeks ago to get their input so that we, uh, form some of our processes with that input involved. So those are some kind of quick examples of how those two or two county offices are involved.
Just a quick follow-up then on that. What about the municipal prosecutions and the municipal law enforcement entities? Are they all, uh, kind of in on this?
So that was in part why the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, um, also held a, uh, recent meeting to make sure that they got feedback and, and assured who was most interested in, in working with us on the pilot startup and who wanted to be first, um, in, um, making referrals. And, and yes, we have, we have a couple different law enforcement agencies that are interested in being part of the startup with the Thurston County Sheriff's Office and making referrals when that option is available to them. They've already, uh, in some instances, already have in mind some folks that they believe, once they see the final eligibility criteria, would be, um, uh, be referring and also are very interested in serving on the advisory board and keeping, uh, keep helping us shape this into the future, so.
All right, just one other thing, how does the Blake decision fit into this?
So, um, that was something that was a really, and obviously, I am not the person to tell you all about the Blake decision as a public health and social services employee. But I can tell you as someone who's trying to help folks and all of our partners move this along, it, it was a really big deal for a LEAD program. And that was also, um, in part because a, um, a portion of the referrals, um, would have come from folks that were affected prior, um, to, uh, uh, would have been from arrests related, um, uh, prior to the Blake decision. So we had to take a look at those, um, referrals were gone, and we had to take a look at, it's still a low-level, uh, offense program. And we had to take a look at our numbers and how that affected things. And, uh, unfortunately, but fortunately, in Thurston County, the LEAD program has plenty of people that still need this service. And we will have plenty of referrals with the low-level offenses on our list. And so, uh, doing business a different way by giving law enforcement this option, because this is their option. This is their tool, this is another opportunity, another phone number for them to call, to provide a different way. This is still, despite Blake, even though it definitely took away, uh, referrals that we would have otherwise had. This is something that still, we will, we will hit capacity in Thurston County.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. 6B, Request for Proposals for Scattered Site Pilot Project.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners, this is a follow-up to the direction of the board to go ahead and start implementing the pilot, uh, scattered site, um, project that's related to the RV parking in Ensign Road near the St. Peters Hospital. When, uh, the board made that decision, I give you a heads up, there will be- When the board made that decision, I give you a heads up, there will be an item for you to consider to request proposals for a contractor to provide the governance and case management services for the scatter site. So this is the next step in that decision of the board, and Tom is here to answer any questions.
Any questions for Tom, Commissioner Mejia?
No questions.
Just one quick question, is this going to be for the, okay, picking out three unsanctioned encampments, is one person going to be able to keep track of these three kind of rotating around through them, or are you gonna have somebody camped out there all the time?
So, good morning Commissioners, Tom Webster with Public Health and Social Services. So this is, we're looking to hire a contractor, so it would be a team, we'd be looking for that contractor, the provider, to propose the staffing levels that are needed to provide adequate support to three encampments. So I fully anticipate it will be more than one person, it may be two or three full-time people working with the folks in these encampments. So we'll be looking to the contractor to propose what staffing level will be adequate, but I would fully expect that it will be more than one person.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tom, I don't have any questions. At this point, it's 12:08, I had a 12 o'clock, I was able to reschedule that, but Commissioner Edwards and I have 12:30 BHO meeting that I don't think we're gonna be able to get around, so just pointing that out, we have, I guess we can go to 12:30, is that?
Yes, sir, and, well, hopefully I don't kick myself on the foot, but the next few items should be easier, but you never know. So the next item, 7A.
Last on this agenda, so that's why I brought this up.
So 7A is for you to consideration at renewal of a corporation agreement, and this particular is with Lot, the Clean Water Alliance. The board has exercised the legislative authority to have a corporation agreement with different cities in the county where we share services and we share resources. And this is again for your consideration to renew the contract that we have with Lot to make sure they give us the ability to share resources when need be. There is a cap, there is not really money associated with this other than just the ability to transact those, those services mutually agreed by both jurisdictions. And again, this is for a five-year cooperation agreement with Lot, and Tim Wilson is here to answer any questions.
Well, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
This is a renewal?
Yes, because the previous contract that we have ended on, I believe, November 2019, this is a little bit later this one.
Okay, can that at least say it's a renewal? I mean, that, you know, new programs need more scrutiny maybe than renewals if they're working, and am I hearing it's working?
Good afternoon Commissioners, Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager, Public Works. Yes, this is a renewal and there wasn't lag in the renewal process for this. This is a master interlocal that Lot maintains with all of its partners, so this is the same agreement by and large that they would have with the cities of Lacey, Tumwater, and Olympia. It is seldom used, in fact, I don't recall in my tenure here it being used. It, you guys had a great briefing from Lot this morning, and if you think about the service areas for their customers, they do not overlap with our utilities. So what this is by and large for the county is a, an agreement to call upon them or vice versa, but it would likely be us calling on them in, in the event of unforeseen circumstance such as an earthquake or a plant failure or something like that, to utilize their expertise, their staffing resources, their equipment that they may have available that could keep us up and running. So seldom used, but it's, it's a contingency plan for us in our operation.
Thank you.
Everybody good on this item 7A?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Let's put a 7B, there's B, C, and D all look like they're related to.
Yes, I'm gonna cover all three items if you don't mind, and so this is a follow-up to the board approving the issuance of requests for proposals to provide services to the lake management districts, Lawrence Lake as well as Long Lake. The bids were open on April 1st, 2021, and we've received proposals. And the recommendation for you at this point is 7B is to issue a contract to provide the Lawrence Lake Submerge Aquatic Vegetation Control to Aqua Tech Max LLC from Billingham to $62,500. And this, the 7C is professional services to Long Lake Aquatic Vegetation Control to the same company, Aqua Tech Max LLC of Billingham for $120,000. And the 7D is also to Long Lake for algae control, also to Aqua Tech Max LLC from Billingham to $240,000. And again, this is just to consolidate the request for proposals.
I have a question.
I do too.
Go ahead Commissioner Edwards, you're up first.
Has this, because of the water quality issue, and we've got a meeting coming up with these lake management districts to go over things, is this kind of the time sensitive issue that we need to get accomplished fairly soon because there is an issue involving when the application can take place, I guess? So has this been agreed to by those two different lake districts? Is this what they're asking for?
Good morning Commissioners, Paula Cracknell, Aquatic Resource Specialist, Thurston County Public Works. I am the liaison for both lake management districts, and yes, I work really closely with them. We have a partnership where we discuss work plans and goals for the lakes each year, and you're correct, this is a time sensitive issue. We're hoping to conduct an herbicide treatment in Lake Lawrence in early May and also conduct the phosphorus mitigation project in Long Lake in early May as well.
And they're on board with this? Everybody's on board with this?
Yes, sir.
This is ready to go, okay, I'm good.
That was my question, if this had been reviewed by the lake management districts and they had approved it.
Yes, we have been, we are in close communication regarding treatments and plans. The lake management districts were not part of the scoring committee for the decision to choose the contractors, but I have been in close communication with them about what we found and why we chose this contractor to conduct the treatments.
And no, no problem, no problem with, I mean, they're not gonna come back and say, well, we didn't even get to participate in X, whatever that is. So you're confident that there's no concern there?
Well, we have been really upfront and transparent with them about why the county chose the three people who are on the panel and what decisions were, what we were looking for, what we wanted. Had phone meetings with Lake Lawrence yesterday with both Barry and with Frank Cutick, who are two volunteer members. So while they would have liked to have been on the scoring committee, that was a decision that was made from our contract specialist to keep it to the three county reviewers because this is a county contract that we're carrying under our NPDES permit.
Okay, I mean, am I hearing then that we went ahead on selecting, for whatever reason, with no input from these lake management districts, and they're the ones that are footing the bill?
No, sir. We have had many different discussions and conversations regarding what the work plan is that they want conducted, and that was written into the RFP. This year, everything had to happen so quickly to go through the board of county commissioners to get your permission to release the RFP as well as the contract. So this year was a lot faster in the process for sending out the RFP and selecting the contractors. So no, we did incorporate them as much as we possibly could on the process, what was happening with the process and what their end goals are.
Commissioner Mejia, and then I see Ramiro, go ahead Commissioner Mejia.
So for me, you know, I know the lake management districts were not really happy with the RFP and how it came out because of the lack of input they had on that process. And just to hear that, you know, they were, it was like they were consulted about this rather than their input really sought, and it's kind of disappointing because they are footing the bill for this, they're the ones who are an interested party in this. Sure, the county is signing the contract, but, you know, they are the ones who are footing the bill, and just to see that there wasn't a voice on the table for them, it's disappointing. Is there a legal reason why they're not allowed in that process?
My understanding from our contracts procurement specialist is that this is a, it's a policy issue within the county.
Ramiro, did you have something on that?
Yes, what we're discussing today is a procurement policy, is a procurement that we go through. The request for proposals includes a specific technical criteria as to how a specific work needs to be conducted in the county. So the review team goes through making sure that that technical criteria is met by any proposal. So what we don't try to get into any particular contract is to handpick a contractor to produce the work. That is, with all due respect, that's out of context, and that will bring a huge risk to the county. All of a sudden, an independent group is gonna handpick a contractor, the county is gonna be absorbing that risk to produce their work. That is why our review team is put in place, to make sure that we, they go through each proposal to meet the technical criteria to conduct, conducting a specific work.
I do have a follow-up comment.
Yes.
If Commissioner Mejia is disappointed, I am double disappointed regardless of what the county manager is commenting on, perception is a big piece of reality, and when a group is kind of taken out of the process for whatever reason, I think the perception stinks. I'm gonna vote for this, well, I tentatively plan on voting for it because of the time element on it, but I'm hoping, I don't hear from lake management folks, and I hope that we're gonna get this handled earlier in the year for next year's activity, so we're not pushed right up against, everything seems to be a push, so I'm gonna let it go at that, that's, I'm done with my tirade, but I hope it all works out, and I hope you guys learn to work together, thank you.
So, in, I'm taking this in a different direction, so the, in responding to some citizen information, I, my assistant and I have been digging into information on the county website, and I'm looking at a chart that shows that for the 15 years leading up to 2017, like, no more than 100-ish pounds of pesticide were used in our county lakes. And that, all of a sudden in 2017, that became 1,600 pounds, and then 1,800 pounds, and then 1,400 pounds. So I'm wondering what, what on earth occurred in 2017 that we had a 16-fold increase in the use of pesticides in our lakes?
I was not in this position in 2017, but what I can say as far as the pounds for herbicides, if there are different formulations of herbicides used, the pounds increase even though the application levels stay at a similar parts per billion, it's chemical dependent. So if you're using something like sonar or Aquatol, we could use the same gallon formulation of those, those two chemicals, but the active ingredients of the pounds are different. So that's, that's all I can give you right now because I did not have this position in 2017, but we can definitely follow up on that if you would like to do.
Do you have any perspective? I'm not voting for this until I get an answer to this question. Less than 100 pounds used in 2016, over 1,600 pounds used in 2017, and that trend is continuing. I don't understand what's been going on. Somehow we managed our lakes for 20 years.
Could I comment on that, sir?
And we're getting new information about the damaging nature of these pesticides, the evidence is mounting on some of them. One of the ones that are approved, they might be leased or preferred, but they're still within the formulations of some of these formulations, like Lake Lawrence uses glyphosate, which is, you know, evidence mounts on the carcinogenic nature of that. Go ahead Commissioner Edwards, and I want to hear from Tim.
I guess remembering back to that era, I think the lakes management folks came forward with something wasn't working, and I think they did adjust the prescription, I don't know what those chemicals are, but I think it had to do with efficiencies. And I can tell you that the lake management people are doing this all on their own. Every other lake around the state is getting help from the county because the counties recognize that that is an asset to the total population, not just to the lakes people, because the total population utilizes these lakes through the public access process. So I think that the lakes prior to 17 were allowed to go afoul, if you will, and it was because there was never enough money generated by those lake management districts to do adequate treatment, the same as other lakes around the state of Washington get. So that's just it in a nutshell from my perspective, but we're gonna have a presentation next week by the lake management district. I think that there's a mistake been made because they wanted to do a two-hour presentation to us, and they were cut down to, I wanna say 45 minutes. I believe that's a mistake. I think we need to give these people their due, they're talking about very serious water quality issues that are gonna affect our whole community, not just the lakes. So I think we need to give them the courtesy of hearing from them in total as to their needs, so that's kind of where I'm at on that.
First, please, to the question I asked, and then we'll get to another.
So what I'm hearing is, if the staff is ready to bring some information for next Tuesday morning, when we'll review these items again to answer Commissioner Mejia's question, will that give you enough time, or we need to delay those items to give you additional time?
That would be adequate.
Okay, so, and then based on that information provided, then the board will decide whether to keep those items in place or not. I'd like to follow up to Commissioner Edwards' comments. I was directed by the board to bring the two lakes to talk one, to talk about one specific item, and that was indirect costs associated with the labor and the indirect cost that we charge to the lakes. And that is the purpose of next week's briefing. And again, that's the direction that I've received from the board to accommodate the conversation related to the indirect costs the two lakes have. So I'm just following the direction of the board. I mean, if Commissioner Edwards would like to ask for a different briefing for the lakes, lake management districts to give their perspective on water quality, that's a different direction, and I'll be more than happy to follow up on that.
Could I comment on that, sir?
Yes.
I guess my concern is, these folks, these lake management districts are very concerned about water quality as an issue. I don't see the county quite as concerned. They wanted to cover not only any additional cost and how we might help, but they wanted to do. wanted to do, do it in the context of water quality. That is what their concern is. And we have a real problem, I believe our health director yesterday, or the day before, I don't know, the meetings run together, mentioned that the lakes issue is a big issue, it's a big safety issue. So I think we need to start paying attention to the lakes issues. And it's probably gonna cost us some money to work with the lakes management districts to get it right. So that's kind of where, I know Commissioner Minter and I have a meeting here in about two minutes, so I guess we're gonna have to do something different.
Okay, well, I don't know the scope of this briefing that we're having with the lake management districts, but I assume that we were doing what we were doing because we didn't have a choice, but looking at how things were done in the past, there obviously is a choice. So I need to understand the parameters of that choice, so that I can decide whether I feel like we're acting in a way that's safe for the public with all these different chemicals. I guess we're done for now. Thanks Paula, thanks Tim. More to come on those items, and we're adjourned for this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.